I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're going to move this around a bit. Right now, if there's any audience comment, on agenda items only, I assume everybody has the agenda, or you can look to neighbor, wherever it may be. Is there any specific items, or anything you want to talk about, just on the agenda items? We'll have discussion down later on, as you see on the mic, on the agenda.
There was one thing, it's not on the agenda, old business, the hiring of part-time code officer from Las Vegas that we table until this meeting, and it should be done there under old business.
Unfinished business. Unfinished, what is it?
Yeah.
Any commenting on agendas, items? Okay, Redevelopment Authority update. I do want to mention that we have a, I have, council has a copy on here, but we're looking at the blended review process that Allentown has, and we're probably, in the near future, will be able to see our website. I think we're going to go use what they're doing. They actually have a property listing, they have their review process, so everybody knows what the committee's doing and how you go about it. Actually, list of properties, on the left-hand side, there's a whole list of them. So, I know most of the time, if people come to meetings and they want to know about the items, the addresses and that, well, they'll be mounted, or they'll be put right on the, on the website, and then, of course, there'll be articles and things about the blended property review committee and how it works. So, I think that'll be, help promote it a lot more than we have right now. So, look for that in the future. Also, for Redevelopment Authority, just want to emphasize, and this falls right into place, and we're actually a little bit ahead of, of the rest of them, because there's a webinar coming up here, and it's Creating Jobs Through Housing Opportunities. And I just wanted to touch base, because this is exactly what we're doing. Creating Jobs Through Housing Incentives, Funding the State Housing Trust Fund. The Housing Trust Fund, also known as the Pennsylvania Housing Affordability and Rehabilitation Enhancement Fund, is already a success in the Marcellus Shale region, thanks to revenue from the impact fees. Join us as we plan the campaign, and it talks about the trust fund, and how the money will be available there to revitalize the, to realize the economic impact, jobs and tax revenue of housing rehabilitation and repair, revitalize older communities by addressing blended properties, implement cost-effective proven solutions to reduce and prevent homelessness, address the shortage of homes that are available and affordable to low-wage workers and people on fixed income, including seniors and people with disabilities, support homeowners and home buyers, and homeowners of modest means. So, this is exactly what we're after, and this seminar will even give us a little more detail. I don't know if it missed, I don't think Adam's hearing the guys from Redevelopment Authority, but that's some of the stuff that'll happen at the meetings, that they're talking about to help promote that. All right, you want to bring up, what do you want to bring up, Joe?
That last, last meeting, when I wanted to hire James Beckle, and the OBR was going to pay half of his, paid for the first three months. Mike brought up about the contract saying that, it says we're going to train him as a receptionist, but that's, when I read it further, it's not what it says. It just says that they're giving us half of his first three months' pay, in hopes that we will train him for proper phone, customer
person you just hired, we're supposed to work with Redevelopment Authority, as I said. I'm not aware of you, or her, or anybody else you've been talking about, or her, to
to call, you know, how to greet people, the typical stuff that we're going to train
your Redevelopment Authority. And then you sat right there and said you were going to
him anyway, the code office, because he'll have to take turns with doing the front desk
hire her for 10 to 15 hours, and she worked 37 or 38 the first week, or first two weeks,
anyway. And it's through the Social Security Administration, so I don't think there are
I mean. So, she's at 18 hours already. So, is it 10, 15, or is it 20? How many hours
going to be any...
Does the state need to, do we have to hire this guy full-time after that?
is she working?
She worked 37 in two weeks.
Right.
Not full-time, no. It just says, in hopes that it goes into a permanent position, Yes.
So, that's 38, 18 and a half hours. Why, I thought, I thought you said 10 to 15. That's
which would be the part-time position that he's...
I see the word "hope," I thought it said, that we will hire at the full-time position.
where I'm going to try to get a second person. If you're going to work 20 hours a week...
I have the money in my budget, I don't understand why, why you're giving me the No, it didn't say full-time.
It didn't say full-time, Joe?
way back on it. I need the help of my partner, I don't understand. No.
And it did say about, it did clearly say, because I read the first three pages, it Because from the very...
Because you want me to do what you want me to do.
No, no, you, you know from the beginning why we were hiring a person, and you agreed was clearly saying about the sessions.
It was expected that the person will become a permanent employee.
to it twice, at two different meetings.
So, I didn't get more than two weeks to train her, that's it.
What does "expected" mean?
Expected?
No, you didn't get two weeks, you didn't give an effort!
Yeah.
Then he will become, you know, a permanent, like I said, "full-time," it's a permanent,
Well, all right.
I haven't had my hands full in the last two weeks, Joe. because he could be permanent part-time.
Well, you want to make a motion? Do you have any other copies of that, Joe?
I'd like to make a motion to hire James Beckle as a part-time code officer at $10 It was forwarded to all of us, you didn't have this. an hour.
Is that the same, did we pay the other one?
Yes.
You have a second? I do want to clear one thing up right here, Joe. Armit?
You just want to say you want to help, you don't really want to help.
I do want to just read one letter here, and get this out of the way, and then we'll talk about when you get down to a discussion or something. But everybody up here in front of them, and this is a public letter, so this is, this is open, or you guys get copies, I would have been all ready to make copies of it. Dear Councilor Martella, I'm writing this open letter to you and your capacity as the Director of Department of Public Safety with full responsibility for the zoning and code office. A copy of this letter will be made available to the public at our next city council meeting tonight. As you know, we continue to receive questions and comments about code issues that include activities of the former SALTEX site. This letter is provided as a courtesy to you, that I will be referring all of these questions to you as they are raised at public meetings of city council. In addition, I will forward all written requests or comments to you if they are originally received by the mayor's office. I would like to be informed if you become aware of anyone interfering with your efforts to respond to these questions. The City of Sunbury has never allowed political agendas to interfere with the effective operation of government. Your prompt notice on these issues will be certainly helpful, so that we continue to effectively govern on behalf of our citizens. I thank you in advance for coordinating these efforts on behalf of your department.
So, that means you don't want to be lead guy anymore?
I'm not, yeah, I'm not. What I have here is, and I'm sure I heard you say in one of the meetings, "We have nothing for Moran." Unfortunately, I didn't get a chance to have my meeting last Wednesday, so I didn't get a chance to put all this together. But I do want to give this to you, and I'm sure you probably hope you...
I have, but you twisted my words again.
Good for you, good for you, Laurel. When I'm done, you can talk. So, I'm just letting you know, that this, everything is here. If you want my help, you can ask for it. If not, you don't have it anymore. So, that's as simple as that. And the questions from now, when they come into here, will go to you, because that is your responsibility.
All right, good. That should get things settled.
Well, yeah, well, we're on this situation, Joe, I had to bring this up too. There was a statement in the paper the other day, that we hindered you from doing your job up there. And I went through the past three years and four months of all the minutes that we have down there, and there's not one thing...
I said you guys hindered my department.
How do we hinder what you do?
Just like you didn't have it. Nobody even seconded my hire. Nobody even let me hire. Give me money for a part-time people, but you won't let me hire one.
You just hired a person, Joe. So, how do we hinder? I mean, we tried to work with you, but next thing you know, we're working behind the eight ball, and we see all these lies all the time. Okay, so, you guys, okay.
This is a foolish question. I mean, you're getting questions about something you're doing now.
Where do we ever vote on something that we shut you down? Did you ever bring anything up for a vote, except for, just now, I hired a part-time employee, Joe. Bring something else up.
Bring something else up. I had a vacant building coordinates. I had a satellite dish thing that we brought up.
Did you ever bring, did you ever bring it to a vote? Did you ever say this is a motion?
Yes, I asked for a second on that vacant building, or it didn't chirp, nothing. It was just...
I don't think that happened, Joe. I think we wanted to research it more.
So, Joe, you said about satellite dishes. That's not the issue with Moran, it's the issue with the table. Mr. Saxton back there, it's not what he speaks about. Okay? Now, you said numerous times in the Daily...
I said there is no stormwater plan, is what I said, that's what I said. And I have letters here that came with this information, where Dan Rager said the same thing, Brockman said the same thing, Jesse Woodruff said the same thing.
Joe, my question to you is, when you make these statements in the Daily Island, "We hindered," whatever you're going with Moran, just tell me when I hindered you with Moran project. Just help me out, please.
By not voting, I'm sorry.
You tell me what situation it is.
I need help in the code office, and you're not voting to give it to me, so that hinders me. Okay, so, right there, that's my answer. Okay, next question.
No, oh, listen, you're talking...
The votes were seen, they hindered you prior. Tell me what you're trying to tell us.
I understand, it's continuing to hinder me.
I see, okay. Once again, I think I...
It's why you got to take responsibility for yourself, and stop blaming everybody else, Joe, and this council. What is that going to go about? Okay, just call me back.
Okay. New business, we have a proclamation, we have to do it tonight, because it's, it'll be, it doesn't say place to May, but we don't meet again before that, so we want to make sure that we, we get this in the minutes. Whereas, there are approximately 900,000 law enforcement officers serving in communities across the United States, including the dedicated members of the Sunbury Police Department. Whereas, nearly 60,000 assaults against law enforcement officers are reported each year, resulting in approximately 16,000 injuries. Whereas, since the first recorded death in 1791, almost 20,000 law enforcement officers in the United States have made the ultimate sacrifice and been killed in line of duty. Whereas, the names of these dedicated public servants are engraved on the walls of the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial in Washington, DC. And whereas, the service and sacrifice of all officers killed in the line of duty will be honored during the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial Fund's 25th Annual Candlelight Vigil on the evening of May 13, 2013. Whereas, the candlelight vigil is part of the National Police Week, which takes place this year on May 12 to 18. And whereas, May 15 is designated as Peace Officers Memorial Day in honor of all fallen officers and their families, and U.S. flags should be flown at half staff. Therefore, being resolved, the City of Sunbury Council formally designates May 12 to 18, 2013, as Police Week in the City of Sunbury, and publicly salutes the service of law enforcement officers in our community and communities across the nation. James, what are you...
Yeah.
On behalf of other officers, I thank you. Thank you. We just want to mention, I don't believe we have to take any action, but we want to mention, or unless it was in the opposition, the approved, the revised draft application. And Jamie's not here tonight, but the last time Jamie was here for CDB money, you know, keep putting it off, because we didn't get the money until late. And I believe, I just want to read, the schedule's changed to the point where the public, the last one we had was January 28. And then, the next one will be a review of projects under construction that's not a public meeting on May the 6th. And we have a project review, which is a public meeting, and a work session on June the 10th, the final public hearing on June 11th, and the final, final public hearing date, June 11th, final public hearing on June 24th. So, as you can see, there's, there's another, one, two, three, four, five meetings to go yet. But I want, I know that May 6 is a new one, I'm not sure if the other ones have changed or not. But I just want to be on record to show that we're going to have the next one, which is, and you all have copies of everything that we're looking at, how to reorganize it all from the 20, the money that's left over from years past. So, I just want to put in a minute tonight, that the next meeting will be May 6, 2013, Monday at 4:15, right here, down street, somewhere in City Hall. Also, I want to mention, there's, there's nobody here from SRI, is there? And I don't think so. There's, we'll be announcing in, probably by the May meeting, for sure, when we get all the details worked out. But there will be, boy, I'm going to correct myself, is it 239 Market, is that correct?
249.
249 Market Street. If you're well aware of where EMS used to be, about three or four buildings down the street from us. The City of Sunbury, what will benefit SRI, and hopefully benefit maybe a visitor's center, or maybe some, the Redevelopment Authority, we don't have all, everything pinpointed. But we're working on an agreement to take that building for a year, to use that building for a year, I should say, and set up SRI in it, and just have more, more, more opportunity for anybody to stop in and promote the City of Sunbury. Everything from maybe some, the Edison turbines we're looking at, possibly getting in there, starting the historical library. In the same sense, we want it to be a place that people can walk in the streets on Saturday, if they're looking for a list of where the restaurants are, or if they're looking for, they want to join Eagles, and Yalves, or the Moose, or anybody else, have that in there at the same time. So, it'll be a huge benefit for us, it'll be a perfect place to have it out on Market Street like that, where people have easy access to it. So, I just want to announce tonight that we're working on that, and we want to be able to give you more details on the next meeting. Hopefully, we'll have an agreement, and everybody can understand exactly what we're doing. Jim, do you want to talk about the agreement between the...
Yes. The Eagles have, it was a copy of the contract, between the City of Sunbury and the Eagles for their annual pool tournament, beginning May 1st to May 6th. The city is held with Ice Canyon tonight, and of course, Mike will have to look at it so and so forth, but it was a agreement between the two of us. They both take it, and they'll prove it in the courts. I can make that form of a...
Same. We did this last year, right?
Two years ago.
It's the state tournament, actually.
Yeah, it's the state.
Truup?
Yes.
Ister?
Yes.
Persing?
Yes.
Bartello?
Yes.
Yes. Sometimes I wonder if people appreciate all the nonprofits we have in town, all the things they do for. But this is huge. Is anybody here from the Eagles? I know Ricky remembers, and I'm sure there's other people here, but it's clearly huge for the City of Sunbury, what it brings in, that, that day and that weekend. And, well, actually, what, was it five days? Long was that a long run?
No, it's actually the second, second, third, fourth, and fifth.
Okay.
The reason they have the first, they start setting up on the first, so they include it at that timeframe.
And the teardown, the final teardown will be on the 6th, I think. There'll be some stuff on Sunday, and the rest of the stuff will be out Monday.
And it says a lot for us, the fact that they wanted to come back here after two years, and I'm sure it wasn't a regular rotation.
It's strictly in, in the beginning stages, but there's, there's an outside shot that 2015 or something like that, we might have a national pool tournament thing, so everything's going to be worked out, which will be, only United States.
Wow. How many teams are actually put in the building?
I think there's going to be 24. There's, there's close to 100 teams. The last count was 88. And last night, we had a mini-meeting, and it was like, they said it was close to 100 at this point.
Wow.
Yeah, it's amazing that we're going to have the 100 teams here, and everybody's going to go across the river, eat, sleep, and hotel.
Amen.
Salute that side.
Fellow hotel.
Fire light forms, concession stands, Mr. Ister?
At the end of the year, hiring the summer help, concession stand, playgrounds, part-time seasonal workers.
Possession stands where they're working.
They swing for, just swing for?
Yes.
Go to concession stands we own?
Yeah, if we operate, the other ones, all right, the bulk of it.
Oh, well, they equalize their own, salt bars their own.
Any other questions? I can make that form of a... I'm going to go here and hire, as I said.
I don't know, Joe, they, someone came through the...
If we ever get reimbursed, if we ever get reimbursed, I'm sure it'll be a whole damn thing.
Yeah, we get the 35, 45, though. It was like 50-some-thousand we spent, and then we get a certain amount back.
They give us, FIDIC gives us 40% back.
40%.
And we get...
But we don't know how many we're hiring.
More than that back from the primary.
Don't know how many you're hiring?
There's 16 playground workers.
Yes, yes.
All the ones that are coming back this year, worked here last year, so...
Well, they just hired them back, they don't advertise again every year for...
They want to actually hire them back.
Well, we actually do pick up new ones, because seniors graduate, go on to college, and then, or come out of college, and, and they don't come back to get real jobs, so...
So, what do you ask me, which playgrounds do they work at?
Well, we have staff running around, they do rotate, from, like, I'm not sure, I mean, we send Keller, OP's the biggest player on the operate. But Ron Pratt, he handles all that, does all the scheduling.
Well, the only one who wouldn't get, I guess, would be the Goodwells, I don't think, because that's...
No, this isn't part of us. We're, we're willing to help hire as much stuff as we need, right?
No, he's cut.
We'll hire all the playground help we need, though, this year.
No, you missed the point. You're slow for you, Joe. We're cutting back.
Okay.
We don't have a second chance. Ister?
Yes.
Persing?
Yes.
Bartello?
Yes.
Truup?
Yes.
Our part-time seasonal workers, Mr. Truup?
Yeah, it's the same job I've been hiring for the past few years. I used to hire two, but now I'm doing one.
We don't exercise for that.
Same person. Same person, part-time. And I can't find a better worker than this man. He's a great job.
Persing?
Yes.
Bartello?
Yes.
Truup?
Yes.
Ister?
Yes.
Todd's not here. Approval of pay invoices, vouchers payable, 117, 950 general funds, 690, or are we doing that separate?
Nope, they're together.
695, 62 liquid fuels.
Bartello?
Um, yes.
Truup?
Yes.
Ister?
Yes.
Persing?
Yes.
Okay, discussion. Anything, just, you just identify yourself.
I'm Drake Saxton. Disappointed that the council doesn't have the response to my letters, as they promised they would.
Wait a minute, I think I was on the phone last week, Mr. Saxton, and I think Joe said that he would get that information for you this week. Am I correct in that?
I believe Mayor Persing said that Joe would get that.
Well, I think I did ask him, he said he would get it, correct. So, did you get it from Mr. Bartello?
Oh, so he presented at council meeting, if you check your minutes. That's correct. That's correct. And that's because of last Wednesday, when they stopped me from doing it, sir, but go right ahead.
So, we don't have that. So, since that is not the case, I need to tell you that you are, are for sure, and I'm going to present to council the evidence of that on city letterhead tonight, that you are in violation, and I can, and show you this on your letterhead. Article of 1, subsection 148.2, and article 16, subsection 175, 110A. Can, if you would please pass those to council, so they can...
I did.
Thank you. If you would read those, they're highlighted. What you're going to see is that Mayor Persing, who has vehemently denied in these chambers many times that there are violations on Sunbury's SALTEX site.
Just give them around here.
That has been done. You're going to see that Mayor Persing participated in a meeting, discussed that. And this letter that you have is from Mike wrote on city letterhead, and I will read from it. Regarding the discussion we had on subdivision and land development subsection, or subdivision, referencing article 1, subsection 148.2 of the City of Sunbury codes, this chapter is adopted with provisions of the Pennsylvania Municipalities Planning Code as amended. Pennsylvania Municipalities Planning Code requires an approved subdivision plan for sale or lease, I stress, lease, of land with an agricultural exception, not applicable in this case, for separate ownership or operation. Land development referencing article 16, subsection 175, 110A of the City of Sunbury codes, a zoning permit is required prior to the erection, addition, or alteration of any building or land, if the land has been significantly altered with fill and grading, prior to the change or extension. Because no official application is submitted in both cases, my unofficial response is no development can occur on the site until official approval is given by the City of Sunbury. Those codes that I have quoted are violated, City of Sunbury letterhead. We additionally have a communication on Clean Harpers letterhead. If you look at the highlighted sections on that letterhead, you will see on the first page that the land is leased to Clean Harpers. It's a violation of the subdivision code of the City of Sunbury. Last paragraph, first page, unfortunately, during our December 11 meeting, you notified us, this is a letter already, discussion with the city and Clean Harpers, and the, and the city notified Clean Harpers, you notified us that the property is not properly zoned for the type of industrial operation Clean Harpers intends to conduct at the location. In addition, you also noted that there is a requirement in the town of Sunbury's Land Use Management Plan that requires a landowner to file a land use subdivision plan with the town of Sunbury before subdivided land, second page, can be leased to another party. That has been done with Clean Harpers, it has been done with Minuteman, it has been done with Nor, with Northsuther, and it has been done with Moran. You have four violations there. It's very telling, the next sentence. It was your position, that is, the position of the city, that Moran Industries' partial lease of the property to Clean Harpers violated the requirements to have the town review and approve proposed subdivision. You do have violations according to your own meetings, and yet you profess in council to know nothing about it. I might add, that the city on, the city letterhead, the CCs are Mayor David Persing, Councilman Joseph Bartello, Councilman James Ister, Councilman Kevin Truup, and Councilman Todd Snyder. The entire council was aware. Councilman Bartello has taken a position that there were code violations, and I believe that this shows that you're all in violation. Furthermore, those individuals who have perpetrated these violations knowingly are subject to great fines and prosecution. Those fines are $300 a day. If you calculate those fines based on the code, and I will say that if you check article 16, section 175, 113B, which I would be glad to read for you, that section says, penalties, any owner, general agent, manager, contractor, builder, architect, tenant, leasing, or occupant of an entire building or premises in which, any violation of this chapter has been committed or shall exist, and any owner, general agent, manager, contractor, builder, architect, tenant, leasing, or occupant of any part of the building or premises in which such violation has been committed or shall exist, and any person, any person who knowingly commits, participates in, or permits any such violation shall upon conviction thereof, before any district justice in a summary proceeding be sent, for each violation to pay a fine not exceeding $300, and in default thereof, to undergo imprisonment in the Northumberland County Jail for a period not exceeding 60 days. Whenever any such person shall have been notified by the zoning officer by prosecution or in any other manner of such violation, each day thereafter that such violation shall continue shall constitute a separate violation thereof and may be punishable as such hereunder. You have all been informed on this letterhead. Those fines started on that day you were informed. I have informed you numerous times since June of 19, or 2011, and you have failed to act just, because I don't have answers to my last letter. I'm done fooling around. We need answers. The citizens of Sunbury need answers. I got involved in this because the citizens asked, the council, stone-rolled. And now, I have exposed to you some of my investigation. There has been further investigation, there are more documents. But I need for you now to commit and begin to cooperate and do the right thing. We need answers. We would like them.
Okay. And here's the first answer. As soon as Joe puts this together, creates anything in the city council to act on, we will act on it. So, I'm assuming Joe has enough information there that we can get all this together, and then, we will address your opinion and what you have written.
Mayor Persing, I must object. I must object to what you're telling me. Let me read to you. You quoted section 405 in the Sunbury Daily Item of the Pennsylvania Third Class City Code.
Yes.
I now quote to you, from the Third Class City Code of Pennsylvania, "Execution of laws, powers of sheriffs conferred emergency powers, it shall be the duty of the mayor and the chief executive of cities, adopting the city manager form of government and adopting the city form of government, to be vigilant," that's you, Mayor Persing, "and active in causing the ordinances of the city and the laws of the commonwealth relating to the government of the city to be executed and enforced." And you failed to do that.
No, I didn't, Steve. That's where you're missing, that's where you're wrong. The last meeting, that's exactly what I said I was going to do, because I said I was done putting up with all the accusations. We were going to get to the bottom of it, since I could not get any, any answers to them. And then, you specifically, your group specifically went out and took me to court and stopped me from doing it. So, you can't have it both ways. You can't say you wanted an answer, and stop me from doing it, and turn around and blame me for not doing it.
You cannot, you cannot have it both ways. The judge made a rule...
Was it a legal meeting, first of all?
Because it was going to be three councils.
It was going to be.
I was never invited to a meeting, Joe. Would you ever invite me to a meeting?
Show up, Kevin.
Let's get back to...
I'm going to show up.
We got to move on, Joe.
No, because I, because one or two of us is illegal. No, I wouldn't.
That's all I have to say for the city.
Mr. Saxton?
there that we can get all this together, and then we will address your opinion and what you have written. Mayor Persing, I must object. I must object to what you're telling me. Let me read to you. You quoted section 405 in the Sunberry Daily Item of the Pennsylvania Third Class City Code.
Yes, sir.
I now quote to you from the Third Class City Code of Pennsylvania, execution of laws, powers of sheriffs conferred, emergency powers, it shall be the duty of the mayor and the chief executive of cities adopting the city manager form of government and adopting the city form of government, to be vigilant, that's you, Mayor Persing, and active in causing the ordinances of the city and the laws of the Commonwealth relating to the government of the city to be executed and enforced, and you failed to do that.
No, I didn't, Steve. That's where you're missing, that's where you're wrong. The last meeting, that's exactly what I said I was going to do, because I said I was done putting up with all the accusations. We were going to get to the bottom of it, since I could not get any answers to them. And then you specifically, your group specifically went out and took me to court and stopped me from doing it. So you can't have it both ways. You can't say you want an answer and stop me from doing it and turn around and blame me for not doing it.
You cannot, you cannot have it both ways. The judge made a rule.
Was it a legal meeting, first of all?
Because there's going to be three councils.
It was going to be.
I was never invited to a meeting. Joe, was you ever invited to a meeting?
Let's get back.
I'm going to shut up. No, because I'm aware of two of us is illegal. No, I wouldn't.
That's all I'm saying for the city.
Mr. Saxton, please sit down, please, sir.
Yes.
You were supposed to refer to Kevin and I blocking Joe, and Joe could give me an answer. But you also have used that in your language, as you've been quoted in the Daily Item. I'm just wondering, can you cite me all the information, documentation, of when Kevin and I voted against any of Moran's site? Or, when you talk about Moran's site. Isn't that, are you referring to now, sir? I have been, yes, but I'll give you, I'll give you very quick and since not dealing with Moran's site, it goes, it goes beyond that. It goes through all the council meetings. In March 2011, Mr. Edward Morales was hired above Mr., uh, above Joe's objections. Yourself, Mr. Tru, and Mr. Persing hired Mr. Morales. If you extract them from the minutes, you'll see that you voted for that, against the wishes of Mr. Bartello.
We hired that guy, that gentleman, part of the city, cleaning up yards that wasn't getting cleaned up at the time. We didn't hire him as a direct hire as Public Works or a direct hire for the code office. That man was out doing jobs, cleaning up yards and land sites and trash and garbage, worked here real hard one summer, he had a fine job cleaning up until we got a better position somewhere else.
I beg to differ with you. You did hire him for new hire Public Works Code, extracted directly from your meeting.
Public Works Code, and he was an all-around employee there. So what was wrong with that? Where did we, just because he didn't want that? Is that, how did we, how did we, how did we not work with him on that?
Mr. Bartello told you that the money wasn't there for him and that he didn't want that hire. Went right ahead and did it anyway.
So first of all, we did not lose any money that year, because we had a balanced budget. We did not raise taxes afterward. So obviously the money was somewhere in that budget to keep that man on.
But you found the money.
No, we didn't. Find the money is no finding the money. It was just the money's there. We cut back and we cut backs all year to make sure we had the money.
Hey, Mr. Saxton, let me just jump back in here, because you didn't answer my question yet. You brought, you brought something up a couple of years ago about Mr. Morales, okay? It was a, it was a two-part, Kevin's department and Joe's department. In the Daily Item, though, you keep referring back to Moran, Moran, Moran. You never, you never explained that you were referring to two, three years ago to a part-time person hiring. You always say Moran. Now where in your documentation do you have I and Kevin stopping anything from Moran? I want it now.
I don't have a date, but repeatedly.
You need to know what Dave, you said it in the paper, Mr. Saxton. You accused us of something.
I accused you of blocking what Mr. Bartello was trying to do. Mr. Bartello was on. Tell us when, tell us when, right now, get it out. In 2012, and in.
Wait, 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 hold on, 2012.
What did we do? Mr. Bartello tried to go on the site. He wasn't allowed on the site.
How, and Tim and I stopped him?
You stopped him? You didn't get the support of the council to get. Oh, my God, oh, my God. Sir, sit down.
That'd be like me trying to.
Just, just as you walked over Mr. Bartello in the higher requesting. You won't smoke. You have three instances right there, right there, three instances, and I can extract them from the minutes.
All right, anybody? Yes, sir.
We're going to recognize, he never stopped Joe Bartello from doing anything his job to do. Never.
All right, any others?
I want to address the public here. When the Moran industry come up in Sunberry to purchase of the land of the Cellex, okay, I was part of the negotiation with tax and everything.
And who are you, sir?
My name is Vinnie Claus, you know, town county commissioner. Okay, I was a part of the negotiation of the tax and everything else when Moran industry bought the property from the contract with the Cellex down. And I believe, and we checked it out, as a county commission, the Moran industry, he did not violate any rule whatsoever when he bought that property. He, he went by the book. So I don't know why you guys come in here and and a heart to this guy, these people here, okay, they're trying to do their job in Sunberry, okay, they're trying to bring industry, and you guys don't want nothing. You guys just want a good town. That's what you guys want. That's, that's what they're doing to me and the county commission too. That's wrong. Let the people do their job, not all complaint, every day, complaint, complaint, complaint. No, because it's not. Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, but Mr. Claus. Who wants that kind of thing in their backyard in our city? We want something good. Build a hotel there.
It was not, it was not contamination whatsoever, because we hired an engineer, we helped him in.
We asked them to run a soil test for us, and, and nobody ever done it. We never got any cooperation.
Who told you they were going to get that soil sample and have it done for you?
They should.
They never got it. Did he say he was going to take it and do it for you, didn't he?
Every time, every time we ever bring anything up, well, we don't know about it, but we'll check into it.
He may have promised you to get that done and never did it.
We don't want that kind of thing in our, in my backyard. I don't want that in my backyard. They can build a jail there, they can build anything there, but we don't want that in our backyard.
No, don't.
But you want a Cellex. Cellex was there. We put on it. Now we have a chance to make something up there.
All of us have a stormwater plan. That's it. Brockton was asking about the same thing in 2008. Jesse Woodruff said they should have a stormwater plan. Dan Rambler said they should have. The only person who said they don't need a stormwater plan is Mike Rose. He's the only person. And it doesn't matter. They say it's going down the same holes. Then prove it. Show me the plan that says it's going down the same hole.
The county plan.
The county doesn't have that.
The other soil conservation, they said right there, they don't.
2.97 acres out of 14 acres. That doesn't tell me anything about stormwater.
And then you bring the county plan in and bring your other plan in.
We have it here at the last meeting. That letter from McCreary, only said that he didn't see any violations, but there was still no plan. Where is the stormwater plan that is required by law?
Well, I think the plan, I think the letter from McCreary said he didn't need one, because they already had one. That's what you have to bring us something that says that that's not true.
You have it in your packet the last meeting.
McCreary's letter, I have. I don't have anything else that says that's not right. You never presented us with anything that said.
You don't read the chapter 143 of the Sunberry Codebook. You don't have the Sunberry Codebook. It's chapter 143 that says they need a damn stormwater plan. That's all we're trying to get across here. Has nothing to do with Moran or computers or anything else. It has to do with a stormwater plan.
Make a motion, Joe, and ask for a stormwater plan. Didn't you do that yet? So, so your fiction, did you make, okay, and ask it, right?
I asked him if he was supposed to, it's not for council, it's already a law. Council doesn't have to vote against stormwater.
You have a piece of paper that says they don't need one, and you're saying to do it, just bring us something that says it proves they need it. That's all we need to do. Make sure you have it the next meeting.
I can't, I can't give you any more than you already have, yeah?
You never gave me a thing!
No, boy. Read the codebook.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Instead of having all of this fiddery, why doesn't council get together and solve this problem instead of the fiddery? Get down to the nitty-gritty.
Did you guys sue to stop it?
Take a lesson from the end.
Well, I have a piece of paper that says they don't need it, so let's get together and decide what it is. All right, next question.
That was epoxy.
I'm sorry, sir. Give me your name.
Well, boss, if that wasn't the epoxy material that was falling in up there, why did they pull out?
Thank you. Thank you.
Where's it coming from?
Because they're not doing anything up north. That's why everything's cleared out.
That's a good thing that they're not hauling anything in. That's why I look at.
But why, why do they stop?
They're not growing, that's what I'm saying. They're not doing it up. 90% of stuff left up north. What do you want, you're not sending it up there? Mr. Henry?
Dale Henry, property owner for City of Sunberry, taxpayer for City of Sunberry, and a registered voter for the City of Sunberry. Mr. Saxton, just so you know, you said you represent 10,000 people now. My family, which includes three, scratch them off your list, because we don't want nothing to do with you, and most of these people in here don't want nothing to do with you. So you know what? You're not a property owner, you're not a taxpayer, and I've been bitching to these guys, why they even let you talk to these meetings? You ought to be shut off. Point blank.
Well, that's very nice, Mr. Henry, but I do own property just outside the city.
You show me in the City of Sunberry where you own property.
What the City of Sunberry does affects me, affects my.
No, it doesn't. You show me, you just said outside of Sunberry.
And I have the authority.
There you go. You're just telling your half-wise again.
I have the authority to be on the Sunberry municipal authority. You don't own property.
Anybody else?
You don't have to be a property owner to have an interest in this town.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I've got a question.
Yes, sir.
Last meeting two weeks ago, you passed an ordinance which said that you were talking to your computers, anybody who wanted to check what was on them. Am I right or am I wrong?
We said that we recognized anything on a computer as a piece of, same thing as a set, as a piece of paper, correct?
Because I, I filed a request under that ordinance, asking for access to your computer. And I got a reply back saying you did not give access to third parties. Now which one of those two answers is correct?
First of all, you didn't file, you sent us a piece of paper requesting, you didn't fill out a right to know.
It was right to know, it was on the city ordinance.
Even if you did fill out a right to know, the stuff you're allowed to get, you can't get through to a third party because of personnel files and things like that. Do you have access? If you give us a list that you want a specific memo on Moran, for example, or on Dave Persing eating the lunch, or whatever it may be, we'll get that for you. You're entitled to that. You can't just pick up a computer and go through the police personnel file or go through other files. That's why the state says you can't have third parties involved in.
So I was okay with jumping around to check Joe Bartello's computer. Same thing, he had a, his files on his computer, which are confidential as well.
And then nobody's going, the third party's not going to see that.
Well, they'll go to under your motion to execute.
They're not, it's locked up. Nobody's seeing it until it's straightened out. Nobody's going to see that.
That wasn't your motion to execute. That was your, your motion said.
And that's why we locked it up until we got it straight. Now we have it straightened out, how it's going to work, and there's people going to come in and look at it. It's not third-party people. Moran's entitled to whatever he's specifically asking for, or his, his law firm, and you would be entitled to the same thing. You just got to give us specific things that you want.
So who drafted that motion to execute? Did you draft it, or did somebody else draft it?
The motion.
The ordinance something.
The ordinance was drafted by the solicitor to make, to be more transparent so everything can be out there. That, nowhere near, it's, can you, the City of Sunberry can't draft an ordinance that's illegal, and it's illegal to, for third-party people to come in, just like it's illegal for us to say, there's the police pension file, you can look at it, there's the, there's the city workforce file. You can't look at that. That's not public information, no matter what you draft.
Mr. Henry, you know, I know.
Well, it turns to me as if it was drafted, and it was illegal, and it was drafted anyway. So somebody is not doing the job.
There was nothing illegal about it.
Well, it was, because it was the course through the head last week.
Passed for more transparency, so more people have access to these things, and it was never passed to break any laws, which would be to create the opportunity for people to see things they have no entitlement to see.
Yeah, but surely you must have, we're not that before you drafted the actual resolution, had it done.
It's nobody interpreted that we were going to do anything illegal. You're interpreting that you're not meant to go get something that's illegal. That's never been that way.
Well, I was very hopeful for that. It was very clearly done. You should be asking questions about why it was done so badly.
You did a nice point pointing that out to us, Mr. Henry, you really did. And thank you for that. Honestly, would you open our eyes and reply to that?
Yes, sir.
I don't know if he just made a general statement or whatever. He made a statement about having personal information on a public computer.
Right.
Being a government employee, if I had personal information on a public, on a government computer and I took home with me, I'd lose my job. And being in jeopardy of being in violation of ethics laws, you could go to jail.
Again, you're twisting things. It's not, because that was other people's personal information, everyone, people that complained.
If I had personal information on my computer, or if I did personal stuff on my government computer, my, my, if it was owned by the government, I would be in violation of an ethics law, and I could face criminal charges.
Thank you.
About our night.
Anything else?
Yes, who brought the dirt in?
Who brought what in?
Who brought all the dirt in up, up here at the site?
Now, now that I'm going to back you to council, I'm going to be able to find out.
It'd be nice to know where it's coming from, what's in it. It'd be very nice to know. Thank you.
Any else? We talked about the welcome ceremony, Vanessa, I'll bring that up at the next meeting. Jim, you have something that is special on the field inside the tennis court?
I guess that specifically required, there's a group of young men who wanted to play soccer on that, wanted to bring the council's attention, isn't it?
No, it's, it might be a little narrow for soccer, but younger, I'm sure, younger age group of probably would.
They're adults, they're out of high school. Apparently, they played soccer in school. She was one that wanted to play soccer.
Adam Bauer, dam schedule, Jim?
Yes, fiber dam. They're going to start inflation. First, they're going to take into the inspection the week of the 22nd, and slowly increase the, the water level. And in the next two weeks after that period, they want to have completion on the 13th. And the patrons are going to use the marina on the 24th, so that's the schedule coming up for the fiber dam season. So we're going to be a good voting season up here.
I want to mention something, council, and I'd read this tape, but I don't want them reading. So what we have, this is from the chief, that we have some out-of-date hazardous munitions that we need to get rid of. There's a, and correctly from Longyear, chief, I'm just trying to, mandatory maximum five-year storage, proper disposal must be made, no cost option, attorney's munitions over to Mount Carmel SWAT team for disposal. I'm not asking anybody to vote on anything. I'm just saying there's a whole list, and I'll make sure Terry gives you. I don't even know what a flashbang is, or a CS card reader, or a foam baton card reader. But anyway, this is stuff that we need to get rid of, and, and the chief's following through like he's supposed to, to make sure that we adopt this. So all I'm asking you guys, in the next two weeks, before the next council meeting, if you want to, get ahold of the chief, he will show you the stuff, if you want to see what it is, and then next meeting I want to vote to get rid of it. And if you guys have a better way to get rid of it, then just bring it up at the meeting, but we just want to get rid of it. What does Mount Carmel, how do we do it? How do they get rid of it?
They have a place where they can dispose the property. The issue is the CS, the UC, it's all tear gas.
Oh, okay.
Five-year lead before it starts to leak. Something like a cartridge, a ball bag, and black powder. Past five years, they just start to be unstable. We really don't have any place safely to get rid of it, and I have a priority as that.